Meeting of the Halton City Council is called to order. If you will, join us for the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Richard Hutchison.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father, thank you so much for this day. Thank you, Father, for our great city of Halton City. We thank you, Father, for the people who make up this city. We thank you, Father, that this is a city where people care about it being a community. We thank you, Father, that you have blessed this city in so many ways. I pray, Father, that you'll give us wisdom as we continue to serve this city and that each one of us will be tremendously blessed, not only by serving one another, but by your grace especially. Thank you again, and I pray for the council meeting tonight, Father, that you'll give us wisdom. We'll bring a greater sense of community to this community, and we thank you again. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to begin our meeting tonight by pointing out that Councilmember Kim Reese is not with us. She has had a death in the family. I believe it's her grandfather. She has been to the memorial service in Midland, or Odessa, I believe, Odessa, and has not made it back at this point. So we extend our sympathy and condolences to Councilmember Reese and her family during this time of loss. Moving forward with the agenda, we have a couple of announcements, I believe. Our Director of Library Services, Leslie Smith, I believe you have an announcement to make at this time.
I think you all know that since I'm passing something out, there's going to be a test. I think we've all gone through this before. So, study these sheets. I'd like to invite the council and the public to a program that the library is hosting. It's called the September Project. The September Project is a celebration of our freedoms and the American way of democracy. The date, September 11th, was chosen because this is a day for all of us to reflect upon how lucky we are to be Americans. Libraries across the country have come together to talk, discuss, and debate our way of life. Here at Halton City Public Library, we feel we are ahead of the pack, so we're hosting it one day ahead of everyone else in the nation, which is September 10th. The panel discussion which we are hosting is titled, "Can Libraries Preserve Democracy?" Now, I see all of your eyes rolling back. This is going to be interesting. This is going to be on Friday, 10th, I think I've already said that, 10 to noon. We are honored to have as our panelists the directors of the Weatherford, the Benbrook, and the Fort Worth Public Libraries, two professors, one from UTA, one from UNT, and a political activist from the Keller Community. We also invite everyone to attend one of our morning storytimes that day. We will be featuring patriotic themes with the kids. I've left flyers in the hallway, and I invite you to pick those up, and they will give you further details. Thank you. Now, that didn't hurt.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Mr. Muir, I believe you have an announcement to make as well.
Thank you, Mayor. On September 11th at North Park, we'll be having the first annual Gary Hires Memorial Softball Game. This is a game between the Halton City Police Department and the Halton City Fire Department. And Gary Hires is a former officer who died in the line of duty on March 6, 1993. In memory of him, they are holding this softball game, and it's going to be an annual event. The money they get from that will be used to collect new and unwrap toys and monetary donations for underprivileged children at Christmas. So that's on September 11th at North Park.
Do we have any further announcements, Mr. Muir? We move to the next section on our agenda, and that is report from our remaining two council members on the trip they recently made to Austin to the Texas Municipal League's a couple of days of intensive training for new council members. At our last council meeting, the five who had attended earlier gave us a report of their trip and what they learned and some of the ideas they brought back with them. And tonight, Councilmember Clark and Councilmember Hutchison have their report to give, so Councilmember Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The seminar that I wanted to see the most turned out to be the one I liked the most. It was presented by Bennett Sandlin, Texas Municipal League Senior Services Director. It was 4A, 4B sale tax, which also is economic developed corporations. He explained how it came into effect, what it did, how it was used to fostering manufacturing and industry jobs, and how the 4A or 4B taxes could be used in your city. And once he had us on a pretty high, that we were going to have an opportunity to move some money and do different things, he told us about House Resolution 2912, which went in effect in 2003 in a regular session, and has placed limitations on 4A and 4B. So now, the phrase "to promote new, expand business development" was struck. So it's back to how do we interpret it? What can we actually do? And to me, that was very interesting, especially when it has the opportunity to bring in new business. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark, and Councilmember Hutchison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too enjoyed the time that I spent in Austin. Had an interesting drive down there. I drove in a driving rain, had a nice car wash on my car, and it was pretty seedy for a period of time there, so I was glad to make it there and then experienced a nice lightning show while I was there in the hotel, and that was interesting. But I did go to the seminar, by the way, so I do have a report on that. I enjoyed tremendously going to learn about how we, you know, I went to the course on how to handle the media, also went to the course taught by Mr. Sandlin that Mr. Clark went to. I think the one I enjoyed the most was the course on how to build a community, how to build a city. And I think Mr. McNabb, in his book called Interesting Community, wrote some very interesting, had some very interesting comments to make about how to build a community. And of course, the accepted stuff, like building infrastructure, is something that we all expect. But the intangibles that you don't see, but that they're there, that make a community last, is what really impressed me the most. He started off by asking the question, "What do citizens expect from their city?" And I think a lot of it was, you know, building infrastructure, and that's what they expect from the council, and that's what they expect from the staff. But a lot of it also had to do with a sense of belonging. And I stress that because I think everybody in a specific community, and one such as ours, wants to feel like they're a part of something, that they have a sense of belonging. And what struck me the most was that the responsibility for that sense of belonging doesn't just belong to the council, and it doesn't just belong to the staff, but it belongs to every person in the community. It is your responsibility to get involved in the community, whether it's on city-provided boards or committees that the city initiates and the council initiates, or whether it's just being involved in some of the things in the city that the city provides or the community provides, activities in the community that makes our community a little bit better. That's what I was the most impressed with. Everybody has to have a sense of connectedness, and everybody, in order to provide that, we collaborate, we celebrate, we circulate within the community among other people, and what that eventually brings is a sense of identity to your city. And that's what builds our culture, and that's what impressed me the most. I think that's a good vision, too. That's a good goal for us to set for us here in Halton City, and has been a goal as we established ourselves as proud and progressive. The avenue that we travel to get to that proud and progressive will essentially build a culture, a Halton City culture, and that's what I'm most interested in. Therein lies the vision that I have, and so that's what I learned, and that was very impressive to me. I enjoyed the whole seminar. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
For the benefit of our citizens, in case you didn't hear my explanation last time, I'll state it in some reform. It's very important for a city, particularly one with a number of new council members that are elected all at one time, to allow those council members to receive training to do the job they've been elected to do. And I'm very appreciative to Mr. Muir and his staff for encouraging all members of the council to attend these council training sessions, and we believe the council will do a better job as a result of having attended this orientation session for new members of the council. So, gentlemen, Councilmember Clark and Councilmember Hutchison, thank you for these reports that you brought to us tonight. Speaking of reports, we move now to item number one, which is a report, and that is the monthly financial report for the month ending July 31, 2004. Our Finance Director, Joel Welsh, will make that presentation at this time, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Included in your packet for your reading and consideration is the monthly financial report for the 10 months of fiscal year 2004, the period ending July 31st. The first four pages or so of your document, of course, is the executive summary, which I know tops your must-read list now. Beginning around page five is the financial statements. The first one, of course, is the general fund, and then moving forward. I want to just touch on a few highlights of the report and then talk just a little bit about the investment report, and then I'll be done. Property tax collections for this fiscal year have exceeded expectations and have exceeded the budget. This, of course, was due to some adjustments and some final rulings by the appraisal district on some disputed values that exceeded the expectations, so we are at 104% of our budget for the fiscal year. Sales tax collections have been a point of optimism for us this fiscal year. They're at 93% of the amount that we budgeted at this point. I estimate at this point that we will probably exceed last year's actual collections by about 2%. We will, we've done rather well this year in that area. Fines and forfeitures have almost reached budget at 10 months of the fiscal year. This is due in large part to increased activity by the police department and increased court activity. Expenditures so far this year in the general fund are tracking pretty close to budget. By this time of the year, we're about 83% finished with the budget, and we are at 85% of budget with the expenditures. And as far as the general fund goes, and I'm spending a little more time talking about the funds as we get closer to the year because we are beginning to wind things down and taking a long, hard look at how we're going to finish the year, and I think that the fund balance is pretty well on track for a good, positive finish. We're currently at 25% of budgeted expenditures for the year. We will not, unfortunately, be able to finish at 25%, but I think our projections at this point are holding very well for a strong finish in our general fund. The water and sewer fund, I think one thing that was of particular interest was an article that I read today in the Star Telegram that referenced this summer period being the wettest summer period. They were going back and comparing all the way back to like 1915, and they were saying that these three months were the wettest months that they had on record, and it's had a commensurate effect on our water sales. I'm estimating that our water sales will probably be impacted about 5%, and that our wastewater fees and surcharges could be impacted as much as 10%. I'm meeting on a regular basis with the Public Works Director, and we are working on a plan to make sure that our expenditures stay under control and that we're going to come out the year with a net income for the year, nevertheless. So we are watching the issue and we're aware, but we're taking every precaution that we can find on it. The investment report begins on page 16, and our book value of the investments is down to about 15 and a half million. It is not unusual this late in the year for us to be nearing the bottom in our total investment portfolio. The good news is, is that our weighted average year has climbed up from the 1.3% of last month to 1.44% in this month. The biggest reason for that is the much improved performance of the investment pools in which we deposit a good bit of the portfolio. During the month of June, they were paying at about 1 point, about 1-point percent. By the end of July, they were up into the 1.22% to 1.25% range, and I checked them even today, and they are in the 1.44% to 1.45% range. So the yields are better, this is helping the budget, we're going to reach all of our budgeted targets for investment income this year without having to take any risk with the city's funds, and that's certainly good news. And of course, our portfolio will take a jump at the end of next month, assuming that the sale of the $8 million general, $8 million of general obligation bonds and the $600,000 of tax notes goes through.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh, for your report. Members of the council, any questions for Mr. Welsh? Okay, there being none, Mr. Muir, any comments you'd like to make regarding? Thank you, Mr. Welsh. I'm in line now for a motion regarding approval of the financial report just given. Councilmember Sutton?
Mayor, I move that we accept the monthly financial report for the period ending July 31, 2004.
Councilmember Lanford?
Second.
Have a motion, a second? Any discussion on the motion? Okay, if you will, register your vote, and I will display it at this time. And that passes by unanimous vote of the council present. Item number two, a report to be given by City Manager Tom Muir, capital improvement status report.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll start with Streets. Mona, from Katrine de Halton. Street, the project is about 80% complete, with all the paving having been completed. The driveway approaches, sidewalks, a few curves are remaining to be done. Project's a few weeks behind schedule because of all the wetness, but it should be completed by early September. Gage Street, the paving is completed, as are the driveway approaches and the sidewalks. The only thing left is to do some backfill and plant grass, so it should be finished in just a, probably within a couple of weeks, if not sooner. Garland Street, the council awarded a contract back in June. That contract has not started yet, but it should be starting either today, it should have either started today or maybe tomorrow. It's a contract for $409,000 to upgrade the utility infrastructure as well as concrete paving on Garland Street. The street overlay project, or projects, rather, there's eight streets that are being done. You've seen some of the milling equipment out there now. That should be finished by mid-October. As far as drainage, a little fossil creek improvements. The design is still proceeding, as Mr. Welsh referred to earlier. Later in the agenda, there's an item to authorize the sale of bonds, $4 million for this project for the city's portion. The project has been at 65% completion, I mean, design completion for quite some time. They're about ready to get back on that after having reviewed the past work that they've done. Should be at the 90% benchmark by November of '04, again with a right-of-way acquisition scheduled to start in January. Buildings. The Public Works, well, the municipal service center project, on Phase 1, on the administration building for the municipal service center, as I referred to last month, there were some gutter profiles that were installed that were faulty or incorrect. Those have been replaced. We're also in the process of modifying the air conditioning systems to eliminate indoor humidity buildup. I think some of you felt that when we were out there last week at a meeting, how I was kind of feeling a little warm. Phase 2 included a demo of the old Public Works facility and construction of a new Fleet Services Center. They moved in there last month. The fuel island is operational, with the exception of the gates to the compound, the gates are much heavier than what we thought, so we're looking at probably putting in some electronic gates to help the staff, especially some of the slider-built staff members, to access the gate, access fuel after hours. For Phase 3, that included the demolition of the old Fleet Services building and the construction of a storage facility. The demolition has been completed. They've poured a slab, and they've already been erecting structural steel out there, so we should be hopefully finished with that thing here in the next month or so. The rec. center, I'm not sure when that's going to be finished. As I told you last month, there was, we were going to do an indoor air quality study, and that has been completed, was completed just a week or two ago. There were some affected areas. We have authorized a contract to remediate the damaged areas, so that is currently underway. That should be finished sometime this week. Once that's completed, I've also asked for a leak detection survey done of the affected areas to determine where exactly the leaks are coming from. This is more or less to help me point a finger at who's the blame, but that's progressing. The roof issue is still, it's slowly progressing, but it is progressing to a point where that's coming to a close. We've also, as a matter of the project, the staff has decertified $80,000 that we've already paid to the contractor, so we're going to be looking to get that back from the damaged material, from the damaged water that we've had to remediate from the damage. So it's just a long, arduous process. Electrical service has been fully established now. We had some issues with that. We do have a new issue with the backup generator, and we're working with the electrical engineer to address that, but that is what I consider a fairly significant issue, a design issue that needs to be remediated positively. I mean, I struggle with coming up with some good things to say about this thing. We've progressed with the sidewalk along Broadway, the parking lot, bathroom stalls are in. There are subtle little things, but it's, it is a mind-numbing ordeal, but it is going to be completed come hell or high water. No pun intended. I like to tell the contractor I had a full head of hair when we started this, but nobody's believing that. But that completes, that completes the report.
Members of the council, any questions or comments for Mr. Muir on the capital improvements report he's just given? Okay, there being none, we'll move then to the consent agenda. That will consist of items 3, 4, 5, and 6. Item number 7 has been pulled for individual action. A consent agenda, the items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory, and they'll be enacted by the council with one motion. So ladies and gentlemen, I'm ready to receive a motion regarding the consent agenda. Councilmember Holcomb?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as it was written.
Councilmember Hutchison?
A second.
Have a motion, a second? If you will...
Excuse me. There is an item, item 7, regarding the election of the, that was pulled? I'm sorry.
Okay, if you will, register your vote, and that passes by unanimous vote of the council present. We move now to item number 7, and Mr. Muir, if you will, introduce this item, and we'll move forward with this issue.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Item 7 is the election, the city's vote for the Texas Municipal League and our Governmental Risk Pool Board of Trustees. There are, obviously, the Board of Trustees, there's 10, 12 members, of which there are three places, I believe, are being voted on. Four places are being voted on, and they're asking for your input as far as the cities, who the city would like to see in those places. This would be Place 6, 7, 8, and 9, and that is what is before you. In the agenda packet, there are brief bios on each of the candidates. They are from various cities across the state, elected officials and staff members, so what's your will?
Okay, just for a little bit more information, I'll ask the city attorney to explain what this risk pool is just briefly and why this is important to the city of Halton City.
Thank you, Mayor. The risk pool basically is the city's insurance company. It's a pool of governmental entities that combine their risk losses together, and the TML risk pool, which the city subscribes to, provides insurance coverage and provides a defense when the city gets sued and things like that. But basically, it's not accurate, but the best way to understand what this is, it's like the insurance company that the city has a contract with. So this is your insurance policy that you're dealing with. So you have the opportunity to elect the trustees that make the decisions about the coverage issues that pertain to governmental entities, including cities.
Okay, and what we're voting on tonight is members of the Board of Trustees for that organization. Did you have anything further?
No, that's correct. These are just, you have the nominations before you, and you're, every other city is going to be casting similar votes, and then they will tabulate the votes, and obviously, whoever wins will be sitting in those respective places. I'm not sure if the places don't really have any designation other than a place on the dais similar to this body, but I'm not sure what kind of guidance I can help provide with in this endeavor.
Okay, let's move then to Place number 6. There are two candidates. What is the pleasure of the council regarding the selection of our nomination or our vote for one or the other of these two candidates? Councilmember Hutchison?
I'd like to recommend that we nominate, or I'd like to nominate Mr. Greg Petrie as the candidate for Place 6 on the TML Board of Trustees.
Okay, and we won't, I guess, well, we won't need a second. We'll, can we take a vote without a second on that? Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. If you will, cast your ballot for your pleasure on the trustee in Place 6. The recommendation has been Mr. Greg Petrie, and that passes by unanimous vote. If you'll look at your information before you on Place 7, you will notice there are also two candidates. What is the pleasure of the council regarding Place 7? Councilmember Sutton?
Mayor? I'm sorry? Mayor, I'd like to nominate Larry De Valena, City Manager, City Laredo.
Okay, we have Mr. De Valena in that place. Do we have other nominations? Okay, if you will, cast your vote for trustee in Place 7 for Mr. De Valena, if that's your pleasure. Okay, that passes by unanimous vote. In Place 8, there are two candidates as well. What is the pleasure of the council in Place 8? Councilmember Hutchison?
I'd like to nominate, excuse me, I'd like to nominate Mr. Leo Montalvo as... Like to nom, excuse me, I'd like to nominate Mr. Leo Montalvo as the candidate for place eight on the TML board of trustees.
Okay, we have one nomination. We have other nominations. Okay, there being none, if you will, cast your vote in favor of your candidate of choice, the one recommended is the mayor of McAllen. And did you not vote, Mr. Sutton? Okay, so, we have a unanimous vote of the council present. And then, moving to place nine on this board of trustees, we have four candidates and I looked down and I didn't see whose light came on first. I will assume it was councilmember Branson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate Nelda Stroda, mayor of city of North Richland Hills, city of Richland Hills for place nine.
Okay, councilmember Sutton.
That was also my nomination.
Okay, and councilmember Lanford, I believe your light was on. Okay, so, this, do we have any other recommendations for place nine? Okay, there being none, this vote is for Mayor Nelda Stroder of the city of Richland Hills. If you will, register your vote and that too passes by unanimous vote of the council present. We come now to item number eight. This is a public hearing regarding the 2004, 2005 budget and I will ask Mr. Muir, if he will, at this time to introduce this item. Following this introduction and the presentation, after members of the council have had an opportunity to ask whatever questions they may have, I'll open the meeting to anyone in the audience who wishes to, to speak on the subject of the 2004, 2005 budget. Do we have any speaker's cards? Okay, it's not necessary for anyone to fill out a speaker's card on a public hearing, but I just wanted to check to be sure. Mr. Muir.
Thank you. As you referenced tonight in the item to, we will be having the public hearing on the proposed budget. Back on July 12th, I presented a budget to this council that was based on the needs presented from the staff and the needs represented from this council out of the budget workshop that we had in June. The council, we had several priorities. I narrated at least with the top 10 priorities from the council. This budget addresses nine of them in some way, shape, or form. Our finance director, Joel Welsh, is going to go into a little bit more detail to highlight some of the issues that this budget does address as a reminder for you and also as information to our citizens.
Thank you, sir. This is the, the presentation, public hearing as required by the charter and applicable state law for the submission of a budget for the period beginning October 1st of 2004 and concluding September 30th of 2005. The proposed budget is $49,462,682. This is a decrease of approximately $1.2 million from the fiscal '04 adopted budget. The proposed tax rate that is being, or the proposed tax rate for this fiscal year is 54.173 cents and it is up from the 52.095 cents adopted in fiscal year 2004. We are anticipating a, a sales tax increase of 9% over the fiscal '04 adopted budget. It is about 2% from the projected amount that we were expecting for fiscal year '04. As Mr. Muir mentioned, there were 10 council priorities outlined from the council retreat back in Paradise and we have addressed at least, not in a final sense, but in an ongoing sense, nine of the 10 issues. The budget does provide merit raises for employees. It makes an effort to subsidize employee benefits. It provides for, for salary adjustments. We have funded a portion of the unfunded police and fire positions. We have made some, proposed some initiatives for addressing dispatching issues. We have attempted to increase the human resources staffing. We're providing for more employee training. We are planning for the replacement of vehicles in a more timely fashion and within the budget, we are planning to continue to provide street maintenance and street improvements. Those are the nine of the 10 that this budget did address. More specifically, we are providing for two police officers to be hired on or about the 1st of January, a meter reader position in the water and sewer fund, an animal control officer, which is a, a position that is author, was authorized unfunded, is now proposed to be funded and like manner, a dispatcher position as well and then a part-time human resources intern.
Members of the council, any questions for Mr. Welsh before we open this public hearing?
Let me add something. Joel, you had mentioned the proposed budget is $49,462,682, which is down from this current budget of a little over 50 million. Can you go into why it is down?
The primary reason involves our capital projects portion of the budget in that we, we had expenditures planned for fiscal year '04 for bond programs that were winding up in '04. We're doing a new issue that will be expended in '05 that is roughly the same with the exception of the one bond issue that was done in the, by the Economic Development Corporation. There is no replacement for it as it goes off and it forms the crux of the decrease.
Did that answer your question? Okay. Okay, councilmember Sutton, did you have a question for? Okay, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Joel, I really appreciate the information you've given us. Just so that people kind of have an idea of where the budget goes, I noticed in the general fund, about 80% of it goes to personnel or the labor pool, the people that work here in the city. Is that, is that your feeling too, that about 80% of the money in the general fund goes to labor?
Yes, sir, that, that is pretty much the, the status for Holcomb City and it is pretty much the status for Texas cities as well.
Okay, thanks.
Anything further from the council? Okay, Mr. Welsh, thank you very much. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Do we have anyone in the audience wishing to, to speak at this time regarding the proposed budget for 2004, 2005? Okay, there being none, to indicate they wish to speak, I'll close the public hearing at this time and we're ready now to move to the corresponding ordinance. I'm ready for a motion regarding the budget for 2004, 2005. Councilmember Lanford.
Move, we approve the budget for 2004, 2005 as presented.
Okay, this, this for benefit.
Yes. You want to repeat the ordinance?
Not necessarily. I think that that will be sufficient. I wanted to point out for the benefit of the audience, this is the first reading. At the next council meeting, we'll have the second and final reading on the budget for 2004, 2005. Councilmember Sutton, we have a motion on the floor.
That is for a second, Mayor.
Councilmember Hutchison.
That's for a third.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and a third. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, there being none, if you'll register your vote and the vote passes by unanimous vote of the council present. Item number nine, Mr. Muir, you want to introduce the proposed tax rate?
The tax rate, Mr. Welsh is going to be dealing with this. The, the current tax rate that we currently have is 52.095. We are proposing a rate, this budget is proposing a rate of 54.173 cents per hundred dollars valuation. As the mayor mentioned with the, with the budget, this will be the first reading of the ordinance, the second reading of the ordinance, and the final approval of this tax rate will be at the September 13th meeting. Joel, if you've got.
Just a moment.
I'm sorry.
If you could clarify that the meeting will be here in the council chambers and we need the time for that meeting also.
Sure, it'll, it'll be here in council chambers, September 13th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's all right.
Got to do this legal.
Yes, in accordance with applicable state statutes, two things have to occur and we've already done the first one. Before a city may adopt its property tax rate, it, it must first go through the process of determining its budget and that is why we do the budget ordinance before the tax ordinance. We are submitting for council's consideration a proposed tax rate of 54.173 cents. To provide a little background, we had talked about the, the possibility of the necessity of a tax increase even as far back as the council retreat in Paradise. When we first began to receive the estimates of assessed value from the Terran appraisal district, we of course were quite concerned in that the values were showing negligible growth, if any. And as we went through the May renditions and the June renditions from the appraisal district, we were quite concerned, of course, about the, the status of the budget and when it came time to make the proposal, the, the staff, the city manager and his budget proposed a tax rate of 55.095 cents or a three cent increase. I told you back in July that we had gotten some better news when the appraisal district numbers came out of the July 25th roll and that, as I had mentioned at that time, there were some values that had been excluded up until that point that were then included. From there, we were able to calculate the rates and follow the council's instructions that we bring a rate that was beneath the rollback rate. And after we submitted our results to the, the county for them to check the numbers and they made some adjustments, this is how we arrived at the rate of 54.173 cents, which is beneath the rollback rate of 54.174. It's 4% more than the adopted rate of last year. It is 5.7% more than the effective rate calculated by the, by the county on our behalf. The, the net taxable value for this year is 2.7% higher than, than the rate that was calculated as being our current effective rate for this fiscal year.
Members of the council, any questions for Mr. Welsh before I open the public hearing? Okay, there being none, I'll open the public hearing at this time and we had one citizen who filled out a request to address the council regarding the publicized tax increase. That's Mr. Bill Jornay. Mr. Jornay, if you'll come forward at this time, you have a maximum of six minutes to address the council regarding this.
This is for the, about the tax increase and of course, I write everything down because my memory fills what I want to say. We've told you from the beginning that what we really want and need is honest government. Our desires were demonstrated in the recent recall fiasco. You're not children, at least in voting for you, we never thought so. There is a very recognizable difference between legal and honest, fair and efficient. The way we believe, pardon me, the way we behave around family members and the man on the street is so different that we know as the greatest commandment and the furthest away from the opening prayer we get, the further away from honest government we become. Now, we are compromising the senior tax freeze for another tax increase. We have heard there is going to be an overrun of near $8 per citizen on the water bill and not any of this concerns either our freedom or our safety or, or are we allowed to ask where this homeland security money is going? Have you, you have compromised our freedoms for simply maintaining order. You have created a sales tax that has not only taken police off the streets, but left us with safe places in the form of government control, compliant programs that only pacifies, but has no cures. Insurance seems to dictate our laws with no traffic accident investigated. Insurance determines our justice as well as, as well. Raise your hands if you really believe this is fair and honest. We have never voted for less police or more safe places to take the place of our freedoms. We really don't appreciate complacency and deteriorated freedoms. More taxes should never mean more government in our lives. Or is it possible to be free, controlled, and safe in America or even Holcomb City? This is the big question for you. To compromise your freedom for even a tad of safety, you deserve neither freedom nor safety. Ben Franklin. So, now, let's talk tax increase. Then, we might consider installing revolving doors for you. One other thing, it is said, if you wear a dishonest mask long enough, your face may grow to fit it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jornay. Do we have any member of the council who wishes to, a member of the audience who wishes to address the council this time, this is a public hearing on the proposed tax rate? Okay, there being none, I'll close the public hearing at this time and we move now to the corresponding ordinance. Again, this is a first reading of, of this ordinance. Councilmember Hutchison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to propose that we pass the ordinance number 0200401703, the proposed tax rate as, as stated.
Okay, we have a motion for approval as presented. Councilmember Holcomb.
That's for a second, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. If you will, register your votes at this time regarding the motion before us and it passes by unanimous vote. That takes us now to item number 10 regarding the issuance of 2004 general obligation bonds. Mr. Muir, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in November of 2001, citizens approved the issuance of general obligation bonds, an accumulated amount of about $15.75 million. Second installment of these bonds is what we're talking about tonight, which is about $8 million, four million of which is for the library and the other four million is for our portion of the Little Fossil Creek drainage improvement project. I'd like to call on our financial advisor, Mark McCulley. He's going to brief the council on the sale of these bonds and the issuance.
Thank you. Mayor and council, I'm pleased to report the results of the sale. Last week was a busy week for the city, receiving interest rates on the bonds, but prior to that, we went to the rating agency, Standard and Poor's, to have our credit quality reviewed by a third party. In that role, they came back and affirmed our A rating on the general fund and affirmed our A minus rating on the utility system. Basically, because of what we've gone through over the past 18 months, I was thrilled with the results. The staff and the mayor went to the presentation or gave the presentation. The Standard and Poor's rating agency was pleased with what they saw, the steps that the council has taken recently as well as a year ago when the utility system rate increase went into effect. So, very pleased with that portion of the bond sale. All of the insurance companies bid to take these bonds from an A rating to a triple A rating and they were sold as triple A rated bonds at a 4.21%. From the workshop in June, I did the calculator, I'd said it was over 800,000. in pre-council. I did the calculation, the difference from where we budgeted, because we thought we were in a rising interest rate market, to where we are today is eight hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars, less than what we were talking about in June. Basically, a couple reasons for that is, one, we kept our bond ratings, and two, we got interest rates coming down in a time when interest rates, you'll see on the mortgages, were going up. There are a couple of bad economic indicators that came out right prior to our sale that gave the city a window to issue these at a little bit lower rate than we would have anticipated back in June. So, all in all, it went very well, and First Southwest, along with Samco Capital Markets, were the purchaser of the bonds. With that, Mayor, turn it back to you for any questions.
Members of the council, questions for Mr. McLeaney? Okay, there being none. Thank you, Mr. McLeaney. Mr. Muir, any further comments regarding this item?
No further comment. Just to remind the council of what you were told in the pre-council is that this will be the only reading of this ordinance. Once you approve this, that'll be, that'll be it. There will not be a second reading.
Okay. I'm ready now to entertain a motion regarding the wishes of the council on item number ten. Councilmember Holcomb?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance zero-two-zero-zero-four-zero-one-eight-zero-three, which is issuance of the oh-four general obligation bonds.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Councilmember Lanford?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, there being none, I will just play the vote of the council at this time, and it is a unanimous vote. Item number eleven is two thousand and four A tax notes. Mr. Muir?
Thank you, Mayor. As we briefed you back in the previous budget workshops and in this one tonight, we are going to be issuing six hundred thousand dollars in tax notes. Those were, the items that we're going to be buying with those tax notes were covered in the budget that you just approved on first reading. The items that we're going to be buying with this will be seven police cars, added funding for a fire truck. We already have some funding for a pumper left over from the fire station project. We're going to take that towards a new pumper, but we do need some extra funds to go ahead and finish buying the pumper. So it's going to be acquiring an incinerator for the animal shelter, some animal shelter improvements, some technology equipment for the city, and some defibrillator monitors for the fire department. And I'll ask Mark to kind of go over that sale also.
The notes were sold at the exact same time as the general obligation bonds. They were sold at an interest rate of three point six five percent to the syndicate, First Southwest and Samco Capital Markets. By pooling this with the GO bonds, we're able to get economies of scale, and the most obvious one to me is normally bond insurance, to get the bonds from the A rating to the triple-A rating, the insurers will say they have a ten thousand dollar minimum fee, and in this instance, because we combined it with the other, it costs two thousand. So, by pooling it together and selling them at the exact same time, we got a lot of economies of scale, which of course accrues to the city's benefit. The interest rate was three point six five percent, and going back to the November bond election, our debt service tax to cover the bonds that have been voted and these notes is three cents less than what it was when we authorized or when the voters said, yes, these are projects we want to move forward with. So, all in all, we've, we've met what the voters, what we told the voters and have a three cent lower tax rate for that.
Members of the council, any questions on this item for Mr. McLeaney? Councilmember Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor, and it really pertains to both these items. What we're hearing and what we've heard is we got a tremendous deal on these bonds and selling these bonds and issuing these bonds better than we had anticipated, and it was not circumstances that any one of us had produced, it was just market forces that... Uh-oh, there goes the cellphone. Market forces that just happened to coincide at this time, so we're thankful for that. But I, the question may come up is that, well, why are we increasing the indebtedness of the city at this time? And I think that that can be answered effectively, Mark, by the idea that we have a declining debt scale here in our city, and this is just fitting in with our debt profile for the city. We're actually not adding any more debt than we've already projected to have. Could you, and maybe Tom wants to speak on that a little bit.
Back in November of two thousand and one, when we're having the election, or prior to that, with the bond committee that was put together to come up with the projects, the staff at the time, the manager and the finance director and at the mayor's direction, pretty much came back and said, we'd like to see eight million dollars be the total amount of bonds voted. Well, after reviewing the existing structure of the debt, and at the time, the debt kept declining, every couple of years, there was a great big drop in the annual amount you're paying each year, and the, the committee found more projects they wanted and said, well, can we work this in? And through the process of kind of going back and forth, we're able to get to that fifteen million by setting it up every couple of years, new debt coming on when old debt comes off. Our, as I pointed out, our tax rate for debt service is about three cents less than it was in two thousand and one. At the same time, we've done all of these projects and then have the projected last phase, and we keep phasing them in when other debt pays off, keeping our, our annual debt service close to what we have been paying prior to, like, two thousand and one, prior to this election. So having, dropping debt service, and you'll hear me talk about stepped, stair-step debt every couple of years where it's dropping off, gives councils an opportunity to reevaluate through capital improvement program needs that are always changing. And so it gives choices back to the city council, and each time we have a major drop in debt service, we come in, or have been coming in, with this, in this instance, the second phase. And in two years, we have about a four hundred thousand dollar drop in debt service, giving you an opportunity for, if it's the council's wishes at the time, to issue the third phase of that fifteen point seven five million dollar bond election package that was approved in two thousand and one. If that's, is that clear?
And I think that, maybe to sum it up, the end effect of what this is going to do is that whoever is up here at council and the citizens of Holton City in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight are going to have a little bit more flexibility in how they handle issues that may arise at that time from a financial standpoint.
Councilmember Hutchison?
Yeah, and I want to follow that, Jim, what Councilman Sutton set up with, just a comment to, and that's to what you alluded to when you first came up here with the, the bond ratings. The, that establishes good credit with those who establish our ratings, and that's what allowed us to get to a triple-A rating and subsequent, because they're satisfied with how we're paying off our debt. And the capital improvement programs, well, and the ability to decide about what capital improvement programs gives us a little bit more flexibility about how we're going to improve this city here. So I just want to follow that up. That's a very positive thing that happened.
Members of the council, any further question for Mr. McLeaney? Okay, there being none, thank you, Mr. McLeaney. What is the wish of the council regarding item number eleven, the issuance of these bonds? Councilmember Hutchison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to recommend that we, on ordinance number zero-two-thousand-four-zero-nineteen-zero-three, issuance of two thousand and four tax notes, that we pass those, this ordinance.
Councilmember Lanford, I believe you're light.
That's the second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on the motion? If you will, register your vote, and that too passes by unanimous vote. Item number twelve is an audit committee appointment, and Mr. Muir, if you will, tell us what this is all about, and then we'll move forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Per the council-approved audit committee policy, the audit committee consists of elected officials amongst you. You need three plus an alternate that will review the CAFER or the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It's more or less the audit. This will be the, this committee will be reviewing the audit for the current fiscal year that we're currently in, that we're about to finish, the two thousand and three, two thousand and four, and we'll probably be starting that audit process sometime in November and completing it sometime around December, January, something like that. So, with that, I'll...
Okay. I wanted our citizens particularly to be sure they understood what, what this audit committee appointment was all about. I've asked the mayor pro tem to bring recommendations for the appointment of three members plus an alternate, and Councilmember Sutton, we're ready for your recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor. The audit committee recommendations are made up of some experienced people and some new people so that we continue to get a good mix of people on the audit committee. They are Diane Branson, Rich Hutchison, Jim Sutton, and for alternate, Dale Clark.
Okay, you have heard the recommendation of the appointments to the audit committee. If you will, we need a ratification of that, please. And that too passes by unanimous vote. The next portion of our agenda is the visitor citizens forum, and what this is, it is a time set aside in the course of the council meeting for any person having business before the council that's not listed otherwise on the agenda, and to give them an opportunity to speak to the council. All of the comments made must be directed toward the presiding officer rather than to an individual member of the council or to any staff member. Each speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request form, and they must refrain from personal attacks toward any individual. Council cannot discuss or debate any issue brought forth at this time, nor can any formal action be taken because these items were not posted on the agenda in accordance with the open meetings law. So, I'll ask the city secretary, if you will. Let me have the first one of these. Yvonne Andrews Edens, I believe you want to address the council at this time on an Oak Knoll thank you message. If you would, take your time. If you will, come to the microphone, give us your name and address for the record, and you have six minutes.
I'm Yvonne Andrews Edens, and I live at fourteen twenty-one Oak Knoll, and I just wanted to come up here tonight and say thank you. Thank you to every one of you for coming out to our NNO in August in my front yard. We had a big time. But to thank you mainly for taking seriously our concerns that we presented to you. Some of those concerns have already been implemented. Some of the concerns are already in the process, and they will be finished. But mainly, I want to thank you, what about neighbors? They think, I've had so many police officers to come by and see me. I think they think that one of these days, they're going to send me down to Huntsville. But they're, they're caring, they're wonderful, they, they're checking. Have you heard any more? What do you think? But I want to let you know, you do have a problem, and Granny offered to fix it, but they said they'd take it to Grandpa at the shop. That gizmo that you put on the street that says your speed limit is such and such, and it's supposed to tell you how fast you're driving, that dude don't work. But they're trying, and it's, thank you. That's all I need to say is, and by the way, I've seen a bunch of you drive up and down the street and drive in the neighborhood. You're checking. And our long-term, well-known bird sanctuary is getting cleaned up, and I do thank you for that. Thanks a million.
Thank you, Ms. Edens. Our next, our next speaker tonight, getting around the system, Debbie Anthony. Ms. Anthony, if you would come forward at this time, give us your name and address for the record, and you have a maximum of, of six minutes.
My name is Debbie Anthony, I live at fifty-four oh five Vicki. As the council looks to raise our taxes, this newly seated council promised the citizens of Holton City that if we gave them the position, things would change. City departments need to be reviewed. Recently, a job position for a collections and distribution supervisor was open. I understand one of the main requirements of this job was to have a Class C water distribution license. I understand we have a total of eight applications for this job. Five of those had the required C-class license, two had a Class B license, which is higher than a Class C license. The worker that received the job does not have this license which is required. I understand as a city, we are going to keep on staff the man who is retiring from the position and have him supervise this individual for possibly for a one-year term until this individual can get his license at the expense of the citizens. I thought the city was going to rid of the good old boy situation we have dealt with over the past years. In order to do this, you will need to follow through in the city department management levels also. Holton City residents want things done right. Let's promote the individuals who are qualified for the jobs. Let's stop the issue of people getting around the system just because they have connections with certain people in management. Let's get Holton City back to the proud and progressive city we once were. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Ms. Norma Miller. Ms. Miller, if you'll come forward at this time, give us your name and address for the record, and the subject you've listed on your card tonight is hiring practices.
Thank you, Norma Miller, forty-four oh nine Nolly Drive. Many people are watching Holton City with eagle eyes to make sure that our city officials conduct business in a straightforward, ethical manner. The first thing a hiring committee looks at is a person's resume. They scan it looking for items that match the job description. Why would you waste your time and my money interviewing someone that didn't have the basic skills necessary to do the job? Simple question, why not hire the most qualified person to fill the job vacancy? Paying one person to babysit another for a year or two is not the best use of our tax dollars. We do not need to hire a consultant to oversee an unqualified person in order to meet the state water board's directives. The old adage, it's not what you know but who you know, is still true of our city employment practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Robert Downs. Mr. Downs, if you'll come forward at this time, give us your name and address for the record, and the subject on which you would like to speak is residential rent property.
Robert Downs, fifty-one thirteen eighteen. This is a uniform code, housing code from the city of Arlington, and under section one oh two, they say the purpose of this code is to provide minimum standards for safeguard life, limb, health, property, and public welfare by regulating, controlling the use of occupancy located in maintenance for all residential buildings instruction under this jurisdiction. Our city has thirty-eight percent rental property. Us elderly people, we, when we go, you're going to have additional rental property because most of these houses will go to our heirs, and they will be rental property or similar to that. Fifty percent of them have become rental property. But the city needs to pass, get their city code, get our city code combined with some of these other city codes, so the city, we're losing revenue off of these rental houses. The landlords that owns these properties are getting by too cheap with the way they operate in these houses. The landlord should be responsible for the water and sewer bill anytime a tenant moves out. There's no sense in having the city to take a loss with that purpose. So I'm requesting that the city will get down to business and pass some kind of ordinance that will take care of these landlords and make them responsible for all their rent property. property. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, our next speaker, uh, is Mr. William Clark. Mr. Clark, if you will come forward at this time, please, uh, give us your name and address for the record. And you've listed on your card, you wish to speak on the subject, are we really an equal opportunity employer?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city manager, councilmembers and citizens of Holom City. My name is William Clark. I reside at fifty-four twelve Vicki Street here in Holom City. Is Holom City an equal or an unequal opportunity employer? We hear it said that our city's motto is to be proud and progressive. The city recently posted a job opening for a water collection and distribution supervisor with the following requirements: a Class C water distribution license, valid Texas driver's license, high school diploma or equivalent, also three years' experience. Eight applicants were interviewed. Seven had certification. Seven of the certified candidates could do the job. The person who did not meet the requirements was hired without cert, certification or experience in the water industry. In the past, job requirements have always been of utmost importance, and requirement being met was a must for employment in the city. It is required to have two hand, two years' hands-on experience in the water industry, also sixty classroom hours, and to take a certification course from the state of Texas to obtain that license. If these things are not taken into consideration when a job is available, why do we bother? How can we as employees have a prayer of advancing to a higher position when things like this happen? Now, the question is, is the city going to use our taxpayer dollars for the training of a new individual so that he can meet the job requirements when we had seven qualified and certified applicants ready to fill this position? We're told that other cities honor those licenses. Maybe we should look elsewhere. I thought we were trying to get away from being the training ground city. It seems that we're still doing business the good old boy way in Holom City, and we are very disappointed. I thought we were headed in a more positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Uh, that, uh, concludes those who have asked to address the council under the visitor citizens forum.
There are no more forms out there, Phil?
Okay, there being no more forms, uh, do we have anyone else then, that being the case, who wishes to address the council at this time under the visitor citizens forum? Okay, uh, if you will, come forward, give us your name and address for the record. And before you start, I need you to give us the topic you, you want to speak. Would you go ahead, go ahead to the, to the m-
Bonds and debt.
Sir?
I want to talk about bonds and indebtedness.
Okay.
Okay, I'm Jim Moore. I live at forty-nine seventeen Modella. I'm not against things that we've done as a city. Uh, what I have a question about is, I mean, I, the tax rate increase doesn't bother me. Uh, you know, we need to do a lot of things in this city. But I don't understand, I'm not real savvy in a lot of modern finances. But I don't understand the situation of, of, every time we drop off a little debt, then we're gonna, we can get some more, you know, issue some more bonds. You know, I have a lot of friends that have lived like that, and it's always cash flow. And if it slows down, then we're up a creek without a paddle. And I just wonder, is there any way a city can, can operate and get into a positive situation instead of always issuing debt and always being in debt? You know, can, can we generate enough revenue to ever get, get ahead instead of always being behind? And even though it's only four and a half percent or three point six percent, it's still debt. And, you know, I don't know if there's a way a city can get out of that and ever, ever turn around and get where it's not always just cash flow. And then if one thing happened, my daughter told me, she said, Dad, all my friends are one month away from bankruptcy. They're so tight and so close. And, you know, what have we seen in the last few years? You know, we lose Walmart, I mean, we lose Kmart, and God, we're sucking air because we can't do anything. And I just wonder if there's any way a city can turn around and get in a positive situation where we've got some money and have a year's worth of, of budget in the bank where we're not having a bar of money? I mean, that'd about take thirty years to turn something like that around. But I don't know if we could, if a city can do that, or is the mindset to just continually be in debt? And I know what, what percentage we're paying on these bonds they just talked about, but nobody considered the cost of, of how much money that guy got for issuing those bonds and selling them. You know, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars commissioned of these guys. That'd buy a pumper. You know, I just want, I just stand if there's any way, if that's a, a possibility in modern finances today for a city to ever do that.
Mr. Moore, as I, uh, read at the beginning of the visitor citizens forum, because the issues brought forth were not posted seventy-two hours ahead of time, the council cannot discuss. You have raised some, uh, legitimate questions, and they deserve an answer. And what I would recommend you do is, uh, talk with the city manager. I'll be glad to talk with you, and we can, uh, answer those questions. But as far as any discussion from the council or anything from me to answer your questions, we, we can't do that tonight. Uh, you were asking more of a rhetorical question. Okay, uh, there being no further people who wish to address the council, we move now to item number thirteen, the resignation of board members. And I believe, uh, our city secretary has, uh, has something. And if you will explain why you are, uh, bringing this information forth at this time, please.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Um, Councilmember Reese is absent this evening, but she did, uh, email to the city manager her wishes and that she had some resignations to boards and some appointments to the boards. And at this time, I believe that the city manager and the council has given me that opportunity to, at this time, ask for a ratification of the resignation of Ernest Bromlett from the fire services board, place six, for Kim Reese.
Okay, uh, this is, uh, from Councilmember Reese, and, uh, she had emailed that in. Okay?
That's correct.
Uh, are there any other resignations? And we'll vote on those all in one motion. Okay, there being none, if you will, register, uh, your vote for or against this ratification for this resignation. Okay, and that's, uh, by unanimous vote. And we come now to appointments and reappointments. And, uh, Ms. Dobbs, while you have your mic on, I know, uh, Councilmember Reese had two or three appointments to make, so if you will read those into the record, please.
Yes, Mayor. She asked if I'd please, uh, announce, uh, that she would like to reappoint Bonnie Richards to the library board, Mr. Brett Ford to the parks board, and Yvonne Edens Oakno Granny to the beautification board.
Okay, those are Councilmember, uh, Reese's appointments. Uh, Councilmember Lanford, I believe you have an appointment?
Yes, sir. I'll nominate Mr. R.D. Millholland to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, and, uh, Councilmember Holcomb, I believe you have, uh, an appointment to make tonight.
Yes, Mayor. It's, uh, Ms. Jody Hutchison for Planning and Zoning Board, place two.
Okay, are there further appointments to be made tonight to boards and commissions? Okay, there being none, I will, uh, vote on ratification of all of those, uh, in, in one action by the council. So, if you will express your, uh, desire regarding ratification. And that passes by unanimous vote. And as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, item number fifteen, Councilmember Reese is not able to be here tonight because of a death in the family. Uh, we need, uh, a motion excusing her absence, uh, uh, according to, to the requirements of the city charter. Councilmember Branson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we, um, it's, it's on, can't hear me. I'm surprised. Uh, I move that we excuse Councilmember Reese from tonight's meeting.
Okay, and Councilmember Hutchison?
Second, please.
Have a motion and a second to, uh, approve, uh, the, to excuse the absence of Councilmember Reese. If you will, uh, register your vote. Okay, that passes unanimously. The council will move at this time into executive session as authorized by section five fifty-one point oh seven one and point oh seven two of the Texas government code. Any action to be taken by the council on any item discussed in executive session will be made when we come back out in open session following, uh, the, uh, executive session meeting. So, uh, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for, uh, being here tonight, and you're certainly welcome to stay till we get through with, uh, with the executive session.